Good evening, I'm Dan Eastgate, President of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, February 10th, I call this meeting to order. Welcome and thank you to everybody here tonight and for joining us both in the room and online. You can find our agenda and follow along online under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preski?
Here.
All Board members, President accounted for. Dr. Fosnot, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1C is the BPS mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, "Together our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery." The BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You can also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the Board? Mr. Hager?
I move to adopt the agenda that's presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 3 is to focus on success. Dr. Fosnot, I'll hand it over to you.
Good afternoon, Board members. Nice to see you. Thanks for, yeah, thanks for coming on a really cold February day, so appreciate your time. Yeah, tonight we have just a couple of focus of success, somewhat correlated, I'll just preface that to the Board, but distinctly different. So I want to begin with our discussion about language comprehension and curriculum success. And leading off that this evening, and I'll let her do all the introductions, is Ms. Tina Platton.
Thank you. Thank you, President Eastgate and Board members. Over the past two years, I've had the privilege of sharing the efforts we've made to provide professional learning and literacy instruction for our teachers that's grounded in scientific research. And Scarborough's reading rope has been instrumental in helping us understand what specific skills need to be explicitly taught to develop skilled readers. Our initial focus was on those lower strands of the rope that address effective instruction and word recognition. To support this, we adopted curriculum resources that were designed to strengthen those foundational skills. So for our K-2 students, we have a program called UFLI, University of Florida Literacy Institute's foundational program, and that's for kindergarten through second grade students. And then we have the 95% program as a resource for our teachers to teach phonics and word study for grades three through five. While those foundational skills are very essential, we also recognize the need for a resource to address the five key components represented in those upper strands of the rope, which are background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. And we also felt the need to have a resource that aligned writing and grammar instruction with that reading instruction. So to support language comprehension, our elementary teachers have been implementing a resource called Witten Wisdom for that core curriculum in language comprehension. Now, this transition represents a significant shift. It's not only in the materials that we use, but also in the instructional approach. Teachers are using complex, high-quality texts to expose students to rich vocabulary that's grounded in science and social studies content while still teaching those comprehension strategies of making inferences, finding main ideas. Grammar instruction is embedded within the writing, and that writing is directly connected to the text that students are reading. So now, I have some guests here with me tonight, and they have a more important perspective on this implementation. We have two students, they're both fifth graders, and we're also joined by their parents. Their moms are going to come and say a couple words. So we're going to welcome Quinn Hintz, who is a fifth grader from Wilmore, and Brynlee Peterson, a fifth grader from Northridge. And Quinn's mom, Casey, is here, and then Krista is Brynlee's mom. And we'll also have Rachel Schaffner, she's an LDI team member with Bismarck Public Schools. She's going to talk to you tonight as a mom, sharing the experiences that her kindergarten son is having with the curriculum in his kindergarten classroom. And then she also has that perspective because she works with our secondary literacy across our middle and high schools. So first, we're going to hear from Quinn and Brynlee, and we're going to have you come over and stand by the microphone, okay?
Welcome. Thanks for coming. Thanks for bringing your parents.
My class is all reading the same story, so we can talk about the same thing. The things I'm learning is how to read, how to write a paragraph, how to read bigger words, how readers and writers can use wordplay, I can use my creativity. I'm using so many new vocabulary words, and I feel more successful in reading this year.
Thanks, Quinn.
What I am learning in my Witten Wisdom, and Witten Wisdom is honestly helping me learn a lot this year. It's helping me learn about, enjoying to learn about historical figures. The knowledge I am learning will help me with middle school. We are learning more about sentences, and knowing about sentences can help us be better writers. It's hard, but it's worth it. Last year, I was able to learn how to keep a healthy body and how to have a healthy heart. So this far, I have learned about wordplay and how we are going to learn about historical events like the Civil War.
Thanks, Brynlee.
All right, and then if our moms want to come up and say a few words, Krista and...
Sure. I am Krista, I'm Brynlee's mom. Thanks for having us here tonight. Brynlee is a sponge, and she's always been very, very well-versed and like an open book to learning new things. So I think this program they've got going on is really important for the future of our education community, so, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Krista.
Hi, everyone, I'm Casey, Quinn's mom, and I think this year I've really seen Quinn kind of blossom. He's always had a great creativity, but I've learned from him just the way he's forming paragraphs, his creativity is coming out. He actually wrote a little paragraph or story that got submitted in the school newspaper. So I really think this program has helped a lot with his creativity and being able to do that, so thank you so much for having us.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Schaffner, and like Tina said, I'm a parent of a kindergartner, and I also work with LDI for BPS. My son has truly embraced Witten Wisdom, and I'm very impressed with the impact that it has had on his learning. His vocabulary has grown significantly, and he also is confidently discussing parts of speech like adjective and adverb, to the point where he corrects my own speaking when we're at home, which I was not expecting that from a kindergartner. And I've also had the opportunity to work with secondary classrooms, and I'm excited to see as these terms and this curriculum is embedded in our K-5 students, to see that growth when they hit that secondary level. And I just want to give a big thank you to our teachers for their dedication in bringing this curriculum to life for our learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll stand for any questions. And on the presentation that's linked into your agenda, there's some additional comments from some other students and parents across the district, if you'd like to take a look at those, too. But, good job, guys.
Yeah, great job. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Peterson?
Thank you so much for the families and the students that came and Tina, all of your work with it. I just really liked that this was a focus on success because in the school visits that I've been to, the teachers have been working very hard to learn this new curriculum. It's been a challenge. All of them have said it's a worthwhile challenge, but a challenge nonetheless. So I just really appreciate hearing kind of straight from the families and from the kids that it's paying off, because I know your teachers are working hard to put it in front of you, and hopefully, I love what Rachel said, that we're going to bring it, you know, full circle when you get to the secondary. And Brynlee, your quote was the quote of the night, "It's hard, but it's worth it." So just appreciate your wisdom, and then I think that that's a really good reminder to the educators as well who've been putting all that time into it, so, so thank you so much for all of your work.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just comments as well, just thank you, Mrs. Platton, for all the work that you do, I appreciate that. And Quinn and Brynlee, thank you so much for coming here and presenting, it's a big deal. And Brynlee, I am an alum of Northridge, and when I went to Northridge, we didn't have Witten Wisdom, and that's why I'm lacking in those right now, so I'm glad you're going through it. So thank you both, appreciate it.
Dr. Fosnot, something to add?
I would just echo, if I can add, I was in Liberty Elementary today, speaking with some of our educators. To your point, and also your point, Ms. Peterson, our elementary educators have been really putting in the extra effort to get that implemented this fall. They were just commenting how it's starting to feel comfortable, just starting to feel like the edge is coming off. Really applaud our teachers for taking on the challenge in doing that. We have exceptional educators in our district, and it's great to see them implement obviously successful work and see that coming to fruition. The other thing I'd say is, just so people understand, when we talk about science of reading, Witten Wisdom, which aligns with science reading, just so you understand where that comes from, North Coast Century Code states, "We have to use a program that aligns with science of reading." That was some of the impetus from even our, Ms. Peterson and representatives from DPI, statewide educators, our legislators supported that, and that's why we've begun that implementation. So, really proud of the work you've done. Thank you, Tina.
We've got a couple, a teacher and a principal in the crowd, too, so they came to support the students. So, yes, we like to say that we're living in the learn this year, implementing this, but when we hear from students that they're engaged and excited about the topics that they're learning about, that's what makes it worthwhile, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, especially Brynlee and Quinn. It's not, like they said, that's not easy, you guys did great. Thanks for coming tonight.
That is not easy. I get nervous, and I do it twice a month.
And Dr. Fosnot, it looks like we have item 3B, Data Warehouse, now it benefits our schools.
So, this, I think I'm bringing, well, I think, I'm bringing this to you as just a point of knowledge, as we have transitioned some technological systems this year. You truly believe, because you lead with it all the time, we have results policies that are data-rich in how we assess and keep monitoring our student and school performance. We've had a few hiccups this year in that process, not because of us, but because technology changes. It, we've had some changes with our student information system, Power School, which we're anticipating coming. I'm going to have Ms. Seibel talk to you about Data Warehouse. The Data Warehouse takes the, really mountains of data that we collect and how our systems and our students are doing, and allows our educators and our leaders to dig through that and make sense of it, right? And that also, some of those systems help us create the reports that you want every month. And I'm going to have her talk about some of the challenges we've had this year in that, and some of the opportunities it's given the district to look at something different. And I would say, Ms. Seibel and her team have been looking at something because we heard from our vital survey that we gave the educators this year, that time's important. Educators are stretched, they have a lot on their plate, and so when her and her team looked at it, we really focused on, how can we make the teacher's life a little easier? How can we take some things off their plate, make the work they do every night, every day easier? So, I'm going to segue to you, how's that first segue, Andrea?
It's great.
Thanks.
Welcome, thanks for being here.
President Eastgate, members of the Board, as we've kind of been let off, we've talked a lot about our different data places and how we're using that to really bring our results forward and look at what our instruction is. And we've had some changes, and there will be some changes in the coming years, in the next year or so. So if we think about right now, Power School, we have a lot of data in there, and as a state, we are moving away from Power School into Infinite Campus, and there's a lot of unknown in terms of what data will look like and how we will get our data out of that. And so, there's a lot of questions, and I think there is a lot of changes and a lot of uncertainty that our teachers are also feeling about, what does this mean for our workload changes in the data that's going to be coming out? On top of that, we have used Viewpoint for, I think, over a decade, which is kind of a data warehouse that kind of brings all of our data together, allows us to look at it in different capacities, and that is also going away, effective June of this year. So, we're going to be in this odd spot where Viewpoint goes away in June, we'll have Power School for another year, but we know that that, too, is going away. And so, really looking at, what can we get in to support our conversations at PLC school levels as well as district levels to help kind of lift that load a little bit and make it easier for teachers to engage with their data and know, what does this mean for my kids? What does this mean for my students right now, and how does that impact our instruction? And so, with those pieces, we have been looking at, a small committee's been looking at different platforms that are available and the things that they offer, really with that idea of how do we make the load a little bit lighter and still get the information that we need to make the best instructional decisions for our students.
I would say...
Dr. Fosnot?
Well, and I would say, their committee's probably got a really good recommendation, and we're really excited about the opportunities that, we looked at, we have looked at several data warehouse platforms. I guess what I'm helping you understand, and I'm sure you're going to say, well, Jeff, make it work, is those come with a cost. All those come with a cost. Again, Viewpoint, we've used for a very long time, it's been a very economical product, hasn't really served the, probably us as well as it could have, but it did the job. We're going to have to upgrade that now, just be looking for that when we talk about budgets and expenditures, things. It's not going to be a huge amount, but it is going to impact the budget, but we're going to have to make it work because we really don't have an option. Everything we're using is kind of going away. We're having to take on, to make a change that's kind of thrust upon us more than our choice, so, just so you know. And it kind of relates to the report you're going to get tonight, we're going to talk about some of the challenges, the data, when we get to the literacy report, so.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight. Board members, any further questions on anything from that? Seeing none, we will keep moving down the agenda here. Item 4 on our agenda is public comment. The Board recognizes the central role that parents play in the education of their children and supports active parent involvement in the educational process. The Board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command, talk to the teacher, then to the principal, then the assistant superintendent, and ultimately the superintendent. For district issues, please reach out to Dr. Fosnot's office. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve adults' model, the expectations that we have for them. Groups urge to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited to no more than four minutes, and be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The Board does not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand at the approached podium if you'd like to speak tonight. Seeing none, public comment will now be closed. Item 5 on the agenda is monitoring district operations. 5A is R2.1 Academic Achievement Literacy. Dr. Fosnot?
Good evening, I'd invite Dr. Johnson to the podium to present our results this evening.
Perfect. Good evening, Dr. Johnson.
Good evening, President Eastgate, members of the School Board. It's my pleasure to try to follow up the young individuals who she has shared, as well as our colleagues who are working in the trenches, as well as supporting those. So, this is a first kind of report within a little bit of the new style I talked about. Dr. Fosnot and Board Member Amanda Peterson with the Learning Excellence Committee have received some feedback from our community members and are looking to streamline. So, again, we are marking this, or we would recommend to mark this in Making Reasonable Progress. There were seven indicators, six of them were making reasonable progress, there was one with an exception, and it's just off by a couple percentages, and we'll take a look at that. Just real quickly, won't want to rehash everything that you heard, but we have a lot of work in the past that's been done around the letters training, Witten Wisdom. You hear often when you do your school visits, you probably talk to all the principals or others that are talking about their instructional framework. Again, where do we find common ground and agree within our school as well as aligned across the district? And that's horizontally as well as vertically about, this is good teaching and learning practices, and it helps give us common language to learn how to better improve that. And specifically within literacy, Dr. Work with Marzano's group in the high reliability schools, you've heard that, a lot of this, we need to be clear on our instructional framework so that we can talk, and sometimes there's avid principals and others, you know, have the new art and science of teaching practices. Again, it's just a common language for people to discuss. We know that sometimes we need more specific work about helping targeting struggling readers. We know family engagement, and that's an area with our strategic plan that we've been having some discussion about adding that as an area of focus, because what we found is some really dramatic opportunities that were maybe keynoted, but when we can involve parents in that student-parent teacher partnership to be along with that journey, help teach them, what that can look like. So, there's been a really concerted effort across our schools, but especially at the elementary and BSEP, early childhood education, to just infuse that. Prioritizing that literacy training continues to be at the forefront and helping teachers understand their role, even at the high school level of, I may not be an English literacy teacher, but we're all teaching literacy, we're all using the text or interacting with other forms of media to really get at, how are you becoming a literate to read, comprehend, and understand, and then be able to articulate in writing and in speech your thoughts? And so that all comes to fruition, and we know that there's a lot of key building blocks that are really hover around the science of reading, and we're very supportive and excited, again, to see that as students move through our system, helping transition throughout our district. With that being said, I'll just get into some of the indicators there. Our first indicator, we talked about NDSA, we marked that Making Reasonable Progress. You can see that we also received feedback about making sure that we take a look into our subgroups with some of the data that was alluded to, like, we just maybe lack a little bit ability to find all that data and pull it and be able to extrapolate all that data in the same way that we would like to, and moving forward, we try to do our best with that. We look at indicator 2 and 3, which are talking about English, so ACT English and the ACT reading, and in those areas, we no longer have the same data available for the number of people that were tested, the students that were tested across our state, but we do get that overall score. And again, I often say, if one in nine students are here in Bismarck, it's tough to beat yourself, and that's what the gauntlet has been set for us, and that's what we tend to usually do, is that we are still outperforming the state, even though many of our students are making up a large portion of that. And again, within that, we are one of them that in the past, with this data you're looking at, has required all students to be taking the ACT, where not every district requires that. Therefore, again, just trying to add that in, if you're beating everyone in one in nine, and if you're beating, if everyone has to take it, and not everyone else has to take it in other districts, again, we're doing a really good job. And so, again, I think that parents and students can rest assured that they're probably getting a really good education. The one area on indicator 4, we took a look at here, is that continuous growth and attainment, and this is in regards to MAP and the spring Ames Web, is the K-1. So, that K-1 assessment was talked about, that's a new added measure, and we're looking at that, that's why we don't have as much historical. And then in 910, we used to have a pre-ACT, now it's a STARS report, again, they keep changing some of the data, so we're looking for data sets that we believe are useful and practical, but also that we can get longitudinal data, so that's part of the reason that we don't, it's grayed out, we just don't have longitudinal data for that, is it's new assessments. So with that, we do hope that as we are starting to get into that data dives and digging into it and seeing that the teacher can find useful information for their kids, as well as how are my kids overall, or we as a department, or we as a grade level are doing, again, that's where some of that genius and art of learning from one another and stealing those tricks and trade is fabulous. But that area, overall, we did dip down a little bit, just by about 2%, 2%, 3% there, 2 through 8, and again, there's some gray levels, so we have to look at the kids behind that data and figure out what's going on there, and that's done at that more local level of the school level and PLC team. Lastly, you know, last couple of measures, we talked about that continuous growth so that kids are meeting that expected target. Again, we're at 50.9, but remember, we've alluded to this before, Andrea reminds me all the time, you know, still again, 50%, it's a nationally-normed test, it's only expected to make 50%, so if you're hitting above that, then you're doing better than what the test is designed to do. And again, we break that down then by looking at our subgroups, and I apologize for the error on this one, the Asian was marked blue, but it really is green because it's above our target of 50%, so I apologize for that error. President Eastgate, as it did dip .6 lower, but it's still above our target. And again, that's really a fluctuation of error if you're looking at the percentages there. So, overall, doing a really good job there. Our one area then, that would be an outlier, when we get into our subgroups, is looking into that Hispanic population, and again, have to figure out based upon year-to-year, those students that count and don't count, depending upon if it's an EL situation in there, too. But all those things are where we do that work at that local level, by grade level, by team or department, and wrap around the supports necessary to support the kid there. Lastly, you know, we, again, we don't have any data historically for STARS, but then when we get into indicator 7, is looking at proficiency in terms of related to the coursework and how that's been judged as K through 5 is with that standards-based grading, and so you see that longitudinal data, again, doing well. And then you see the growth there at 6 through 8. Again, the discrepancy, as you see it jumping to, you know, from 66% to 75% roughly, that's, the 23, 24 is where we had letter grades be the determination, and before, the letter grade was derived from a standards-based grade, you know, so again, it's just a little bit, you're comparing at least an Honeycrisp apple to a Braeburn, it's not exactly the same, it was still a letter grade, but it was derived in a different way, based upon more of the points that occurred and that more typical grade calculation. And so then we went back and we're comparing it to the letter grade, the letter grade was derived more from the averaging of standards prior to that. As well as then at high school, we had in the years past just looked at where standards-based grades were there, mostly that was in CTE in a few areas, and again, this is now all letter grades, again, in that normal, but it's the first year that we're bringing forward that 9 through 12 larger look there. Of interest there is, you know, if you start looking at some of the percentages, they're really kind of weird to see that there's some uniformity in past years during, like, 10, 11, 12 are all at 65%, but yet you see there's a discrepancy there within the seniors this year, again, jumping up. So again, so those things that we need to look for trends and look for what's going on and speaking to that, but again, when our son or daughters are not doing well, parents want to make sure that grades are communicating, whether or not they should dig deeper, have a question, concern, reach out, such. So again, that's the purpose of grading and the purpose of any test result, is say, here's where your son or daughter is, and these are the things where we're jumping in help, and with what you heard about with, hey, you as a parent, especially at the younger grades, when you're teaching them to read and learn to read, these are the things that you can do to be that partner. So, at this point, I'd stand for any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board members, any questions for Dr. Johnson? And if we have none, what are the wishes of the Board? Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. With respect to R2 Academic Achievement Literacy, I move that the Board accept the report as Making Reasonable Progress.
Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks again for presenting the data tonight, Dr. Johnson. Next up, item 5B, GC8 Board Member Conflict of Interest. We do have a public reading, and then the Board can act on it, so, we will jump into that. GC8, Board Member Conflict of Interest. Board members are expected to avoid conflicts of interest involving all matters considered by the Board. A conflict of interest exists when a member is confronted with an issue in which the member has a personal or financial interest, or an issue or circumstance that could render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness of purpose to the public interest. Number 1, if a board member has a personal or financial interest in any matter being considered by the Board, the member shall disclose such interests to the Board. If any such conflict is disclosed, the remaining board members shall determine whether the conflicted member should recuse themselves from the deliberation in vote. Number 2, a member of the Board shall not receive any compensation for services rendered to the district other than legally defined and authorized compensation for serving as a member of the Board. This provision shall not prohibit members from receiving reimbursement for authorized expenses incurred during the performance of Board duties. Number 3, the Board shall not enter into any contract with any of its members or with a firm in which a member has a financial interest. Number 4, a member of the Board shall recuse themselves from participation in any employment, discipline, or termination decision involving an employee who is a member of the Board member's immediate family, including a spouse, child, parent, grandchild, or other person... grandchild, or other person who lives in the board member's household. Number five, a board member is expected to avoid conflict of interest in the exercise of the member's fiduciary responsibility. Accordingly, a board member may not, A, disclose or use confidential information acquired during the performance of official duties as a means to further the board member's own personal financial interests or the interests of a member of the board member's immediate family; B, accept a gift of substantial value or economic benefit which would tend to improperly influence a reasonable person or which the board member knows or should know is primarily for the purpose of a reward for official action; C, engage in a substantial financial transaction for private business purposes with a person whom the board member directly supervises; and letter D, perform an official act which directly confers an economic benefit on a business in which the board member has a substantial financial interest or is engaged as a counsel, consultant, representative, or agent. That brings to the end the reading of GC8 Board Member Conflict of Interest. Board members follow in the reading. We will be looking for both a recommendation whether to retain or amend, as well as if you determine us in compliance or not.
Mr. President, I'd
Ms. Preskey.
recommend that we retain GC8 Board Member Conflict of Interest.
I would second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And next on to determine the compliance, Ms. Preskey?
I would find that we are in compliance.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item six, Matters Reserved for Board Action. Six A is the Bismarck Association of School Administrators Negotiation, excuse me. So this is just referring back, if you remember, board members, that we had a petition to recognize the Bismarck Association of School Administrators. We had made that, we accepted that at a previous board meeting, and that was posted. So with that, you have a recommendation there. Dr. Fosnot?
Yeah, just to clarify further before board takes action on this, the last sentence of the recommendation that was in your board packet, I'd ask you to, if you're okay, to exclude tonight. We think we'll have a petition from the teachers, and I think we can make that recommendation to do both those in a future board meeting. So really, all you need to do is just take action on the first part of that motion this evening, as we have received their petition and there's been no challenge to the petition. So I did have opportunity to meet with their representatives today. So we've tentatively set the next step, which is within 30 days, having an initial meeting. We're already setting that date. And so just, you know, we're continuing to start that process. So.
Thanks for that, Dr. Fosnot.
And with that, since there has not been a petition filed challenging the validity of the petition from the Bismarck Association of School Administrators, I move that the Bismarck School Board determine that the Bismarck Association of School Administrators does in fact represent a majority of the certificated licensed staff employed at administrative positions and recognizes the Bismarck Association of School Administrators as the exclusive representative organization for a minimum of one year beginning July 1 of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Scher.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 6B, R2.1 Academic Achievement Literacy Indicators. Dr. Fosnot?
We'll see if I have to call the more verse person up here, Ms. Seibel, to help bail me out. But kind of what we talked about in our focus of a success dealing with data. And as we were working through the process of building this first report that we, Dr. Johnson articulated, we've made some changes to since last time. And you guys approved those previously. We talked about that. As we were compiling the data and starting to build it, Ms. Seibel, because she's really good at her job and dealing with data, comes to me and says, well, Dr. Fosnot, this isn't going to provide the results you're seeking. It's not going to be as comparing, I think it was used before, apples to apples. And some of that deals with test, the actual, what the test is testing. And I may have asked her to articulate that. When you talk about Ames Web between a kindergarten assessment and a first grade, that's not testing the same thing. I'm going to get this wrong, Andrea, and you're going to correct me. And then also between some of the testing windows for our high school exams. So as we learned some of those changes that building leaders had made in some of that, it was like, okay, we can't use this data. So in the original report you saw tonight, we took, I think it's indicator six, which deals with the demographic groups by growth. And we reported actually an indicator one for you in this report. It's not really part of indicator one. We reported in both sections to show you, based on a recommendation we're going to make in a second, that we could move that that indicator under a different test, the NDA plus, and show you similar data. What you're seeking, I believe, is to monitor performance of subgroups with a different exam that would allow us to do that. And then, Andrew, you're going to correct me and say, Jeff, you're totally wrong. But I think we're asking you to consider, and you have my apologies, that we came to you and asked you to bless the report and changes to the indicators. But we've learned new, and we've looped in Ms. Peterson to that. And you have my apologies. But we need really to have a really good report that is accurate to the data, we need to ask you to make a couple more changes to it, to the indicators. So I don't know who wants to go first. Do you want to go first, Ms. Peterson or Ms. Seibel? Okay. She can clean up for me. She's like the cleanup hitter.
Ms. Seibel, thank you.
President Eastgate, members of the board, I think there was just a few nuances as we were getting into that. And that has been kind of referenced in terms of some of those tests within our K1, they're, one, they're different tests for kindergarten and for first grade because the skills are progressing at pretty rapid pace between kindergarten and first grade. Different assessments are there to really look at, are they moving along in their literacy? And not only are they different assessments, but they are at different timeframes. And so while we could average things together, you would be looking at two different tests and two different times that those tests were given. And so it is kind of getting things muddy a little bit. And if we were to continue to keep everything broken out by grade level, it's going to get larger and larger. And when we are looking at subgroup data, if we would have to break that out by test and by grade level, now we're going to have what a lot smaller of subgroups to look at, and once again, representing different timeframes and different assessments. And so it just kind of clouded things up a little bit. Within our NDSA data, that's public facing data, right? Like that's on our state website. It's out there for families to see, and it's broken down in different capacities. And that will continue to be there, even if we move different from Powers School to Infinite Campus, or if we're moving at a different data warehouse, that data set will be there. And so because of that transparency and how it is, one of our public components of are we doing our job, it is there within our NDSA, it makes sense to also be looking at that component. Within our high school assessment, it is the same test, but it is different timeframes because of NDSA and different times that 10th grade takes out and 9th grade does not. And so once again, it kind of muddied things up a little bit when we're looking at comparing growth. A little bit different if you have a fall to winter versus a fall to spring. And averaging that together felt a little muddy because we have one grade level that would have had quite a few more months of instruction in looking at that growth piece.
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, because, speaking from the perspective of the committee, because I think in the original intent, the whole point of looking at this indicator was to make sure that we had data that was actually reflective of what maybe the board would want to see in this overall data set. And I think when I, when, you know, again, I don't want to speak from the entire committee, but some of the vote or decision to move to having some of the reports being with all of the grade levels was to see, okay, let's see what our kids are doing at all grade levels, not just two through eight. But then we kind of made a blanket change, not really thinking through what Andrea so, you know, intelligently talked about, which is looking at those different growth points. So in the edits that I think they're presenting here, it's just still, I think, meeting the intents and purposes of what the committee wanted to see, but also to what the reality of looking at multiple data sets for different indicators. So it's kind of maybe rolling that back, not to say every single indicator for every single test, but in a couple of the indicators, just really looking at growth and keeping to where you have one assessment that is going to be appropriate. So anyway, I think that I really appreciate both the transparency and really the efforts of the team to try to maintain what the committee had asked for, but then also being realistic about, I think none of us, what I remember from when we've had retreats in the past and really looking at these indicators, it wasn't to have any data team really, you know, doing backflips to give us, you know, some data that doesn't really make sense anyway. It was to have a clean report that really showed the overview of what our school and our, you know, our schools are doing and our students are doing. And I feel like these edits will do just that. So I hope that that, that that does that.
Thanks for your work on that, too. Dr. Fosnot?
And we brought Ms. Peterson right away when we were building the report that you received tonight, just to loop her in, like, hey, we're having challenges. How would you like me to present this? How do we, us to present this? So we kept her informed. I would say, and to Ms. Seibel's point is, while we were talking about like the ninth and 10th grade test, along the way, we, the state changed their test, too. Went from an ACT that was 11th grade test to an NDSA that's now a 10th grade test. That's why that timeline got kind of shifted over what we thought was going to happen. It's just the logistics of principals having to get now multiple tests to a 10th grader that we weren't taking consideration. So that is, that muddied the water for us. But with that, if you are okay, I'll just explain the changes. So for sake of people online, too, indicator one was no change. That's NDA plus. That's required by state statute. Okay? Indicator six, which is the second one, which we're making two, is really the growth indicator we had before. That was the MAP growth indicator. We had kind of added Ames Web. We'd added STAR to that. And that's where it got messy. So our recommendations is say, having the subgroups is still very important, monitoring subgroup performance. And again, you can see those in your report tonight, how that's reflected, is to now do the subgroups using the NDA plus, because it's required by the state anyway. So we'll monitor subgroups on that state-reported test. The sample sizes don't get too small then. We don't get a really small sample size because it is the state test we're giving to all kids across grades. So we ensure that we don't get a really small end size with those kids. And then indicator two would become three, no change. Three would become four, no change. Four would become five, no change. And then really indicator five would now be six. And what we're doing there is because of, again, it's growth and we're having, as Ms. Seibel said, challenges with Ames Web to measure growth because of the change in the test, and now it is not aligned. And then also for STAR, because it's at different times, we're having trouble being really honest and accurate about growth. We would go back to just reporting growth on MAP, and that's two through eight. So really what you had before, okay? And that is the, what we'd ask for and changes to the indicators for R2 literacy. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. I know, yeah, I know there's a lot that, I can tell there's a lot of work that went into this. To say, you know, you hope it makes sense, I, there's a lot here. But what I appreciate, and Ms. Seibel, thank you for all your work on this, too, because striving for accuracy and clarity brings understanding for us as we look through these. So we appreciate that. Board members, any questions that you might have? Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. I think the big thing, I just want to kind of segue off of what Board Member Peterson brought up. But as we talk through this, you know, where we've come in coherent governance to where we're at now, we've made leaps and bounds. It used to take so much time and energy to package these reports. And this is definitely another step in the right direction, where we still get the data, we still get what we need, but we're not putting undue pressure using, using our staff's time wisely. So anything that we can do to make these, the data collection and putting these reports together simpler, I think, is, is great. So.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Peterson?
And President Eastgate, just one other point of clarity. We, even though I know that both Dr. Fosnot and Andrea talked a little bit about NWEA MAP and some of those other pieces, I want to remind, I mean, we did stay vendor agnostic as much as possible from this. That was another point of the committee. So that hopefully after we make these edits, you know, and get the, the growth number right, that if the assessment changes or the state changes, that it still allows the team to not have to come back to the board and rewrite this if there's different assessment changes. So with that, I would move to approve the first reading of the revised coherent governance results indicators, R2.1 academic achievement literacy as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Yes. Sorry. Lee? I said yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Item 6C, Board Member School Visit Update. I checked in with board members. I know I have one to share tonight. If anybody else does, please let me know, because we can get more than one in tonight if we need to. So I had a chance to visit Legacy High School. Just, gosh, well, I'll get to it. But I've been there twice in the last two weeks. It's been pretty great. So I've got a number of things to touch on, and I'm going to get buzzing through this. I'll just start off by saying, Mr. Schmidt spent some great time with me. I wish he would have told me to bring my running shoes, because I felt like we really went and tried to see a lot of the school in the time that I was there. And it was awesome, because I wanted to keep seeing things. And there was a lot of great things to highlight and show. And at the end of the day, later on that same day, Mr. Schmidt just followed up with an email and said, I know I took a lot of time today. I hope it was good for you. He's like, I'm just so dang proud of our staff. Like, he just talked about how he wanted to just showcase a lot of the great things going on at Legacy, which, Mr. Schmidt, thank you. I was glad to be there as long as I was and to get a chance to talk to so many different staff members. First thing I would just say is when you come into Legacy, one of the questions we often get is that Legacy does have a different scheduling style than our other schools with the Flex Mod. And Mr. Schmidt was just really quick to point out to me, Dan, you're not just tripping all over kids everywhere, are you? Like, it's just not people running everywhere. And I, we laughed, and I said, no, not at all. And it felt very much going through the entrance and into the commons, just like Central High and Bismarck High. I would say there was same about number of students hanging out in the commons, because they had an off period, getting a, you know, a snack, or over at the Saber Sip, something like that. I've got it in here somewhere. Anyway, at the Saber Coffee Shop. And so it was just, Legacy felt good. It's our newest secondary school, and they're very proud of it. And we should be at Bismarck Public Schools because it's a great building. It is Saber Sips, just to make sure that we had that. It's open all day long. Kids can grab it whenever they need it. Moving on, our new wing, the C Wing, just got fully, fully finished, I believe, August 23 of this last year. I'm close ballpark there, right, Dr. Johnson? Dr. Fosnot? Yeah? And that was the date that Tom gave me. So it's, over there, we got to run into a bunch of different space. So we saw a shared space with, for large groups that come in. It's a multi-purpose room. It can host up to, I believe, 120. And they'll even be hosting things like DAC Olympics. He talked about some other groups that we're able to host, some of these academic type fairs that are coming through. I shouldn't say fairs, but contests that are going through. We went down, there's a new culinary wing. And the students were making Eggs Benedict that Mrs. Hertz's class was making. I love Eggs Benedict. I was offered some. I felt bad because I think it was the only ones the kids had. So I didn't take them, but they looked amazing. And I appreciated the offer. Also, the Saber Center and then the ID classes. So I had a chance to talk to Ms. Casey Kouts, who's also an educator and a friend of mine, and just so proud of the work they had going on. And I'm just excited that we have that at Legacy for all of our students, for our educators to have the space they need for the ID classrooms. The Saber Center, the Saber Center, if you don't know, it's a, it's a drop-in spot where kids can go to get extra tutoring. So if they have these off periods, they can stop in. Teachers take turns. They sign up at the beginning of the semester, and they sign up for these blocks so that kids can look at the schedule. It's right there on the glass. It tells them exactly. So if you need help in math or science, whatever subject it might be that you know, there'll be a teacher there that can help you out. Also, what I like to hear is that students can also be assigned, because I have two high schoolers. And my wife's much better at this than I am, but we follow up if we feel like, really? That's the grade you got on that test? That could have been better. Guys are doing fine. But anyway, so we'll follow up sometimes. And this is a great chance that if your students have a busy schedule, they have things going on before or after school, that they can stop by the Saber Center. So I think it's great work that we have going on there. I hope that we'll continue to be able to do that in all of our schools. Some of his words on that, it helps all kids. If you ride the bus, it's available before and after. If you can't get there early, if you have to leave right after school, there's equal access for all kids at the Saber Center. We talked to Ms. Iri there, and she got, she just said, yeah, it's just kind of, there's kids in and out all the time stopping in there. Ms. Chelsea Dahl was sitting in there, and she, she helps us get earned credits back. So and aides in different classrooms for them to have to repeat classes if they didn't have some of these opportunities. So some really good programming there. And it still allows kids to get to go to their electives. So if you struggled in a class, and now if you would have to go take that class over rather than do an earn-back, and some of those students, I mean, frankly, they might be struggling in some of the other classes, even if they didn't fail it, they might not be getting the best grade. And if all of a sudden we start pulling away electives, we know that kids, electives are a big part, a lot like extracurriculars. It keeps kids excited about the rest of their learning. So I think it's just a great way to keep kids engaged. This is Mr. Schmidt's 30th year. And so, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. That's a, you're doing a great job. So we just talked through a bunch of other things that kind of come up, both at the board level, I think, all the way to in households that have kids. So I just asked about, you know, how are behavior things going on? He said 1% of kids cause 90% of the problems. And that's, you know, he just said that to me. I don't know that he had out like a stat sheet for me on that. But I, it kind of sounds like a workplace, right? A lot of times, 1% of your employees or coworkers might cause 90% of your issues. And he just said, for the most part, their, their kids are just awesome, and they just really enjoy the students that they have over there at Legacy. So be proud to be a Saber over there. I'm going to buzz through a bunch of classes we stopped by, because we went to a lot, but Ryan Bless, science class, Heather Costalecki in the math wing. And I've been asking, too, because as, as we were hearing about, for sure, as board members, but in the community at large, we hear about, you know, phones in schools, things like that. So I started asking these questions. People wonder if we just tour and watch what math is going on. You know, we're asking these questions, right? Ms. Costalecki had a great one. She did point out it was a calculus class coming in. So these are kids that are high math achievers. But she said, talking to them about phones isn't necessary, because they're more excited about the math than they are their phones. I was just, I was like, wow, you don't hear that all the time. But I thought it was pretty cool. Mr. Schmidt gave huge kudos to our middle schools. He said our middle schools have done such a good job of putting things, of getting kids to know when they need to put things away. So when they need to put their phones away, it's becoming normed in their middle schools that there's appropriate time to maybe have or not have it. And I know, for the most part, our schools are able to make some of their own decisions on what we're doing with these. So a lot of them, they had like the, the phone totes up in the front of the class, and a lot of teachers talked about how those also help just create social norms. Kids start to put them in there. When they're asked, kids are obedient. They're not running into behavior issues when they ask kids to put those away. We stopped by Ms. Huck's calculus class. They had a math obstacle course going around, around in their wing. It kind of looked like Good Will Hunting, if you know the movie, where like, there's really hard equations that I, I just glazed over, and I said, I think this is great. Let's keep going. And so, yeah, when we continued on, stopped in Mr. Thornton's room, talked quickly in the hallway with Mr. Zane Hofsky and Mr. Reel, just heard about how great and how proud they are to be at Legacy. We stopped in the anatomy classroom. Mrs. Margaux Braun, she, they were doing cat dissections coming up. So that was a big topic we had with a number of classrooms, wondering if, how, how's that going? Because as you know, anatomy class can, can be a smelly subject at times. She had a bunch of great puns for her education, like cat out of the bag, or the cattle ranch, which was, it, it all had to do with her anatomy class and some of the projects kids are doing there. We also made it over to the, to the drama, to the play production area, and they're getting ready for the play that goes wrong. I said, oh, so it's a comedy? And she said, well, right now, it's, it could be a comedy tragedy. We're working to get it all done. So she just was kidding, but they needed, they were, they're very busy working on props and getting things tied up. That, February 13th to the 16th, go check that out over at Legacy with Mrs. Wardner running that. Talked to Lori Reel, who had just been in here presenting the school board. She again thanked just for her presentation on art and the importance of all that. She said to thank all the board members again for that time. And we stopped by Ms. Elkin's room and Mr. Schmichael's room, AP History, AP Environmental Sciences, and just so proud of our educators. Man, we just have, they welcomed us in. They kind of, they kept going. Some of them, we just kind of ducked into the back so we could observe what was going on. And I'm just super impressed with some of the offerings these kids were getting. Environmental Sciences, they were talking about Urban Sprawl. Mr. Lee, commercial realtor, you understand what this is all about. Mr. Schmichael was teaching AP US History at the time. And, and again, just, it gets me excited. I like history. So for me, just to get to hear those subjects and that our high school kids are getting a chance to get excited about it. And then just the last note, Mrs. Kouts invited me back then a week later for their second annual flag football-inclusive sports Super Bowl, before the Super Bowl. And man, you want to talk about a great time. It was, they had music pumping in the gym. They had teachers and aides that were able to get away during that time to help coach or to play. Mr. Zane Hofsky was doing an and-one basketball style. He was out on the floor commentating for it. And just to see kids get wins all over the place. If you don't know about our inclusive sports programs in Bismarck, I highly recommend it. It's, it's right up there with the varsity basketball game we had last week at the Century Gym. I mean, it is such a fun time. There was one, there was one young man, and he had a, his right arm was in a cast, and so, but he was playing quarterback still. And his flags fell off inadvertently before the play. And I just loved the fire in the belly that he just spiked the ball, and he's like, come on, man! And so, Coach ran over, helped get it on. They redid the play. No penalty, no flags. It was a much more exciting game than what we experienced last night. So get out, get out and enjoy your, your inclusive sports here in town, you guys. It's really, really awesome. So, Mr. Schmidt, thank you for my time at Legacy. Board members, thanks for listening to my, my long-winded report. And to all of our educators, just keep up the great work. It was really, thank you for letting me be a guest in your classrooms. I don't believe, am I correct in that, no other school visits tonight? So we will look forward to hearing more down the road. Next on the agenda, item seven, the consent agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Scher?
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And item eight, Superintendent's Report, 8A, Major Projects.
I'm going to hand the podium. It looks like Mr. Scher's coming around the podium. So I'm going to give the time for major projects, Sam. Thank you, Mr. Scher.
All right. Thank you, President Eastgate, members of the board. Happy to be here to talk a little bit about our major projects. Really, the one that's most active right now is our current technical building up in the Silver Ants Edition. If you've driven by, you'll see that we've got steel in the air, and it's progressing nice. So if you haven't, take a cruise up there. That, I'm projecting by end of March, that'll be, you'll see what the building's actually going to look like. It'll go fast. Remember, that's a kind of a Butler building, so like, the panels are pre-insulated panels, so they don't have to do an inside and insulation and outside. They'll, it just will go quick. Now, I say end of March, I'm feeling good, but the next two weeks with temperature, we might have to push that back a little bit. On the expenditure side, the only thing I want to point out to the board there is, if you remember on the CTE, a majority of that funding was actually grants, right? But you'll see that our expenditures are pretty, well, they're growing, and our grant revenue item is not. And that's just the timing of the state. So we submit it by a certain date, and then it just takes them a while to do their internal processing. Like, for example, I visited with our accounting staff, and we're waiting on roughly 1.2 million in reimbursement. So you'll see that on the revenue side grow. With that, that's really the only update I have for you. I expect that we'll close out Lincoln. Yes, it's been done for a while, but it just takes that long before we kind of get everything wrapped up, hopefully this month. And with that, I'd stand for any questions the board might have.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Scher? Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate the report.
Next thing, if you don't mind, I'm going to just provide a little legislative update. I passed one around the table, so if you want to share those, you get those weekly from me, kind of legislative items. I'm just going to hit three main points, I guess, mostly for viewing public cellphone bills. You mentioned cellphone, President Eastgate. We still have about three primary cellphone bills sitting in the, in the legislative process. At some point, some have been heard. I will tell you that House Bill 1160 did meet with Representative Jonas and also Representative Heinert to try to build kind of a, a working cellphone bill. So we think there's going to be some revisions there, and you'll see something. Actually, for me, and I think my team were supportive of that, that's more about making sure we have really clear policy on when and how kids use them in instructional time, when and how kids use them during non-instructional time. And, you know, leave some of the choices yet to our educators to manage those within the school, but set some clear parameters for our kids. And I'm, I'm okay with that. So unlike a couple of the other ones, we're like mandated pouches for all kids across the state. I would tell you, much as the pouch is probably simple, we just throw it in there. I do think administration of a pouch across thousands of kids in a high school the size that we get to manage would be, would be a challenge to do that, even though it might be really appealing for parents to say, send that pouch home, too, because we can use it at home. Just some of the logistics to have and to manage those. So we'll continue to watch those. The one that was in front of us today dealt with student meals. I know this has been really a, a popular topic. You got a couple bills, House Bill 1553 and 1475 on paying for student meals. It was good testimony today. Really, the difference between those is one bill talks about using the general fund dollars to pay for that for the state, the other one, legacy fund earnings. And if I get the number right, I think the number was like 140 million over a biennium to pay for free lunches for kids across a biennium. So, and that's not all kids, because some already get federally subsidized or paid meals. It's to make up the difference. So I would tell you, my team and I, my school leaders are all in support of that. We think that would be a good thing to ensure that our kids have a warm breakfast and a warm lunch as before they become learners. And, we had some people providing testimony in support of that today. The last one is school choice and vouchers. We have multiple bills dealing with school choice and vouchers. There's so many, I didn't copy them today. You get them in the NDSBA newsletter every Friday. We'll just continue to watch those. That's everything from microschools to magnet schools to private charter schools to education savings accounts. And we just continue to guide those. I will tell you, the ESA bill that was out last week, that was going to give a payment to parents for maybe out-of-school services. I did share some support on that. I do think, I applauded our legislators to recognize that public schools can't do it all. We can't be asked to do everything. And so sometimes you, I know my kid best in what they need. Could be an educational service, could be a mental health service, could be just helping pay for uniforms or meals. Well, you know your kid best. So to do some of that, maybe as recognition that, don't ask public schools to do everything, because we're really having a hard time doing everything. We get, you know, we get stretched so thin. With that, the counterpoint was direct opposition. I still, I don't stand supportive of using public dollars and giving them to anybody in the state. I don't care how you do use public dollars without accountability. So if you're going to get public dollars, I've kind of made the argument over and over, just be accountable for them. And I think that's well-supported. So we'll just continue to watch those and see. I'm not trying to kill or advance any bill, just providing those as probably clear, clear points to stand on, and hopefully our legislators will follow that. So, do you have any questions on legislation?
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. So when we talk about funds used by families to support educational needs of children, is there any talk about hypothetically, kids who, whose parents aren't really engaged or don't, you know, know those funds are available, or don't care those funds are available? Would the school be able to talk to the family and, and help them use those funds?
Mr. Lee, members of the school board, I sound like I'm testifying now. There, there has been a little discussion about that, not very much, though. I think outside of the committee rooms, we've talked about with legislators in, more in private, like, would you allow us to provide maybe a service or be a recommender for service, almost like a Medicaid referral? That hasn't, we haven't seen that really in committee much. It's been more of, it's just a parent choice. You got options. You go, you decide what you want for your kids. So I don't know if that's had a lot of traction. No. The other one that we've really talked about is school meals. If they're not going to pay for universal school meals, allow education savings accounts to pay for school meals. Again, I don't know if that's had a lot of traction, so.
Okay. And I, and I do think, you know, I'm sure board members would agree with me, you know, when we think of the least among us and the resources they have to take advantage of these programs, that would be my biggest concern, but.
I agree. Getting access to them. You may have the money, but, and we've challenged some thoughts on that, is you may have access to the money, but just for some of our parents, negotiating the process to get access to the funds. I mean, when you talk about, and we had a presentation here recently about, if you have trouble with the language, you are newcomer to our community, you can't navigate English, you, maybe you, you, you lack those resources to understand how to, to navigate the online system to get the money to do the things you want for your kids. Okay, someone's got to help support them, because the, again, to your point, Mr. Lee, I think the ones that are challenged the most might have the hardest time accessing that for the benefit of their child.
Good point, Mr. Lee. Ms. Preskey?
And I would just go take his points one step further and just make the committee and the public aware, too, that every tax reform measure that's been discussed about at the legislature includes some sort of limitation for budgets for political subs, including schools. So something definitely to be mindful of and watching as the session goes on, because that could really affect us when it comes to budget time and, and the future of any other services and programs that we offer.
Thanks, Ms. Preskey.
All right. Any other question on that one? I'll go with the next one. We all love talking legislation, right?
Next item.
Next item. Thank you. I had talked to you about providing some time for you to ask deep questions and creating a workshop on, on behavioral health continuum of care. That, just the behavioral health systems that we have in place, which I know you've been versed on, but just general public, are complex. They're deep. They're not easy to navigate. There's three tiers of that. We have, I think we provide very good service to our kids, but we need, there are some gaps that we've been articulating with legislation. I think it's important that board members know that. You should have got invitation to a workshop time that I'll, on March 3rd, that, again, Ms. Nelson will be leading up for us to provide you more information about that, comprehensive supports and services, because it is so complex. Understand, like, to be good stewards of tax dollars, how are we using money to support these needs? So you understand them more, more deeply and keenly, so you can be good stewards of tax dollars, so. Okay? Any question on that one? Should have got that. And last thing, I feel it's my duty and responsibility to tell you that my evaluations do. So Ms., Ms. Amber wanted me to let sure you knew that by law, you have to have my evaluation done by March 15th. You already know this, right? Our board meeting's on March 10th, and all she wanted me to know, and this is really her first time, is she's putting together reports for you. She wanted you to know that she's doing her job on that. And then also, she'll send you a, a survey to provide your comments here towards the end of the month. So be watching for that from Ms. Estbrook, so. She's doing a great job, learning a very difficult job, so she's doing good.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot. Seeing no other questions from the board on any of those items? Our agenda has been exhausted. I declare this meeting adjourned.